I just want to check and see that City Hall can hear us.
Yes, we can hear you, and I've started the webinar.
Great.
6:30.
So I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, March 29, 2022, to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here, and I will not have a camera on. It's 2:30 a.m. where I'm visiting family, if that's all right.
No problem. Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lam.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Thank you.
Great. Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Next is our pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Moran, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Seconded. Great. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? By a vote of six zero, ayes have it. Next, we'll have public comment pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and the public is able to, public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the day of meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the City Clerk L to at L H A C H E Y at samamish.us and the City Council at citycouncil@samamish.us. If you want to give verbal public comment, please join the Zoom meeting, and then information on how to join is listed under the meeting accessibility at the top of our agenda. After three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided live during the meeting. During public comment, the City Clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if you wish to give comment. If you're joining by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you, and you will be given the ability to turn on your webcam if you desire. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to give public comment this evening?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to give comment tonight. I currently do not see any hands raised.
Great, and we will.
Oh, wait, I see one hand raised just now.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll transfer them. Mary Victor.
Hi, my name's Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish for over 20 years. I wanted to speak briefly tonight to something in the mayor's report about the Kokonya Work Group. There's an item in there where they're increasing the amount that they'd like to ask for for $50,000, which is divided amongst the neighboring cities which are around the lake. Sorry, I haven't got my mouth warmed up this morning. And I just want you to give your full support to it. We've spent literally millions of dollars on fish culvert projects. We're still spending millions of dollars. We've also gotten millions of dollars in grant money to do these projects because there's a fish culvert case federally, and everybody needs to be doing whatever fish culverts they can. So the small amount, whatever we pay, $53,000, $54,000 to the Kokonya Work Group, is super important. There's an entire team of people that works from all sorts of organizations around the lake. They do cryogenics with the eggs and the milt from the, I guess, from the milt from the salmon. They fly by volunteers' baby salmon all the way up to Canada so that they can rear and bring them back. The numbers were critically low last couple of years, like 112 or 82 were only returning. This year, there were over 2,000 salmon that were counted, and in Kristi's report, she says 16,500 fry. Is the fry right now, or they patched, and then they're swimming to the deep parts of Lake Samamish through the streams. But if you take 16,500 and you take a 13% return or a 6% return, you only end up usually with about 1,000 to 2,000 fish. So we are making lots of headway. It's super important that we all work together, and I just, I've been a volunteer for a lot of things for many, many years and advocated for many things, and I just hope that you will support what the Kokonya Work Group is doing. I also wanted to thank the city for putting the artificial lighting brochure in the actual newsletter to the city because it went out to people. I do notice there's less lights even around me, but it's super important at this time. I don't know, Mayor Malchow, if you guys can decide. It would be cool if the communications people in the city would put up something on the website, because right now, the fry are swimming from the stream to the lake, and if they love those little lights and stop to look at them, they'll probably get eaten by prey. So the more people that can turn off lights, particularly in March, April, and May, that's when the fry go. And then if they can get to the deep part of the lake, then they have a chance to spawn back in three years from now typically. Sometimes it's two to four. Anyway, I did send an email on it. I'm also updating the email, because if you ever want to see where these streams are, there's a map of it, and I'm giving you things so you could walk in the springtime with your family to go see some of the creeks that we have, four out of the five. So thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. Sorry I was late warming up here.
Thanks, Mary. We'll touch base on the light stuff a little bit later when I get my council report. Madam City Clerk, is there anyone else wishing to give public comments this evening? Action. This is pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. I don't see our city attorney's camera on, but Madam City Attorney, might you give us some indication on timing? How long will be?
I would say expected duration for the first item of approximately 10 minutes.
Okay. So based on my knowledge of council, let's go 15. So we'll be 15 minutes, and action is expected. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. All right, council, we'll see you over there. We'll be back in 15 minutes.
Good evening. Council will extend the executive session for an additional five minutes. Again, the council will extend the exec session for five more minutes. Thank you.
I'm just missing one more council member. Karen, are you on? And just not on camera. There we go. Okay. Got everybody. Okay. Next, I would entertain a motion for consent. Oh, there is no consent. Never mind. Moving on. Unfinished business. Item one, we are.
Actually, Mayor, excuse me. Did you want to entertain a motion from a council member?
Thank you. Councilor, is there a motion? Councilmember Howe?
Me and mute myself here. Okay. So I move to authorize the city manager, or say his designate, to enter into a settlement agreement with Kate Landstorf, consistent with the terms recommended by the city's legal outside counsel.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, there'll be something coming out from comms so that it's known that this is not being paid for by the city.
You're on mute, Dave. If it's acceptable to the council, I will work with, I'll talk to Scott and have him work with comms on creating a statement for the city.
Mr. City Manager, sorry, I have a question relative to that. The city put out any information originally on this?
Did the city?
Yes. It's kind of unprecedented that we comment on litigation. We don't normally do that, so I'm just curious if we previously put any communication out on this.
No, we haven't.
Okay. It just seems awkward to me to be putting out communication, but if council, if that's the council's will, that's fine.
Yeah. Glad you didn't mention that.
Perhaps that could be handled as a separate motion to not confuse the motion on the table.
Agreed. Okay, so if there isn't any more discussion on the motion on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five one, motion passes. Okay.
I move that we direct the city manager to have Scott work on communications to the effect that there's no cost to the city, that insurance is paying for this litigation.
I second that.
Okay, is there a discussion? Councilmember Trine, did you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Councilmember Howe?
I think this sets a precedent that we don't want to get into, so I will not be supporting this.
I, okay, we need to be recognized, please, by raising our hand if we want to make comments. It's fine if we want to, just, I think saying that it's not going to cost the city anything is likely inaccurate. It is our insurance company, and anytime there is a claim, there is the likelihood that it will cost us something. So I don't know that that's an accurate statement. So given the language of the motion, I will not be supporting it.
You aren't going to support it anyway.
Okay, you're not on mute.
Sorry, I didn't want to be.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the nays have it by a vote of two to four. Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent.
There is no consent.
Right. Sorry, I made that comment before. All right, we're going to move on to unfinished business. The first item is a resolution approving the 2022 Budget and Work Plan Program for ARCH, which is the Regional Coalition for Housing. I believe we have Mr. David Pyle from our community development that will kick this off.
Metamare, in the meantime, just quickly, this is Deputy City Manager Scott McCall. Just wanted to let everyone know that we are having some challenges with both Channel 21 and the YouTube live feed. Neither one are available at the moment, and we are working on it, but don't know when that will get fixed.
Thank you for letting us know. The video is recording, though, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the livestream webinar is obviously working. It's just the YouTube channel and Channel 21.
Great. Thank you for letting us know. Do we have Mr. Pyle on, or has he been promoted yet?
Yes, he's on.
Okay, wonderful.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, David Pyle, Community Development. We are a few minutes ahead of schedule this morning, or this evening, excuse me, feels like morning. So I had to contact Lindsay from ARCH, and she'll be joining us in a minute. But in the meantime, I'm going to send her a quick message again, letting her know that I'll be starting off with a brief overview of ARCH and the city's relationship with ARCH. So her part will come in a few minutes anyway, so I just want to let her know that.
I think Mr. Pyle may be having an issue with technology. There we go.
No, I.
You froze for a second.
I'm communicating in real time with ARCH staff. Given that they were on until the later hours, the last meeting, they are, we're really thankful that they're able to join us again here today. So just giving them a little leeway here. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and find the presentation that I have here. Just a second.
Mr. City Manager, you just had your hand up. Did you have something for us?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, council. If you'd please forgive me, I'll have Scott, he's there. He's going to step into my stead. My postnasal surgery is just really flaring up and giving me a problem, and so I'm just going to step away. I'll monitor, but Scott's going to handle the city manager role for the rest.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and I have a brief overview of the ARCH relationship with the city and some background for the council before ARCH steps in and presents on the three topics tonight. Great. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen. Wonderful. So, oops, let's see. So I just wanted to start off this evening and provide some background information for the council, as not everyone has had a chance to work with ARCH and to explore the role that ARCH plays with the city, as we've done in the past through the budget cycles and through review of affordable housing initiatives that the city has. ARCH was formed in 1993 via interlocal agreement. The city joined ARCH shortly after its incorporation, and the city is one of the 12 members, including King County. So there's 11 cities and King County to make up the 12-member organizations. And the purpose of ARCH is to provide a larger framework across an area of geographic influence to support affordable housing and to adequately and appropriately plan for affordable housing on the east side. You can see here the member cities and where they sit in comparison to Samamish. We do have a great relationship with all of these cities by way of ARCH, and staff find high value in having ARCH, in being a member of the ARCH organization, as we oftentimes find ourselves presented with questions or issues we need to address, we're able to call up our counterparts in these other cities and work with them in finding a solution. The ARCH relationship with the city consists of the executive board and the citizen, excuse me, excuse me, the executive board, and we also have a liaison meeting that we attend quarterly. The executive board typically is the city manager, city administrator, or department director. In the case of Samamish, I am the one that sits on the ARCH executive board and meets monthly with the other cities' appointees who sit on that board. The executive board reviews policy direction that is brought up by ARCH staff and reviews funding opportunities for affordable housing projects on the east side. The executive board also reviews applications for the Community Advisory Board, or the CAB, and makes recommendations on appointments to that board. The Citizens Advisory Board is a group of community members that they don't have to live in the cities of, the member cities. However, they typically are people who are interested in promoting affordable housing on the east side, and they have very diverse backgrounds and experiences that they all contribute, ultimately helping make projects that ARCH takes on successful. The member councils are the ones that ultimately fund ARCH. They review the work plan that ARCH has, which we'll be doing tonight, and they ultimately pass resolution authorizing release of funds from their budgets to support ARCH. The member councils also review recommendation from the Community Advisory Board and from the ARCH executive board on affordable housing projects within the member cities' jurisdictional boundaries. And ultimately, the city council is responsible for determining whether or not to authorize dispersment of funds from the city's budget. Basically, the city pays out monies on an annual basis to the city of Bellevue. The city of Bellevue, who is the parent city or the umbrella city for ARCH, holds those monies in an account, and then when the Community Advisory Board and the executive board identify projects that would benefit from partnership or funding from the ARCH trust fund, the city council then is responsible for reviewing those projects and making a determination as to authorize Bellevue to release those funds from the account that Bellevue holds for Samamish. The city council also is in the role of considering policy recommendations made by ARCH and by the ARCH executive board. An example of that is a letter that recently came to you identifying that there will be some recommendations coming forward from ARCH in the near future regarding some rent issues, rent increases that relate to adjustments made by the HUD calculation, and that many of the ARCH units are going to be facing a fairly significant increase in rents, and the executive board is going to be taking up this topic at their next meeting in April. ARCH staff are really like an extension of the city's staff. They help with providing what I call elasticity, in that we don't have to have a full-time affordable housing expert on city staff, and we can then take advantage of the knowledge pool that ARCH represents. When we are confronted with issues, we could take them up with ARCH staff. We often find ourselves calling ARCH staff to ask questions about things like our inclusionary zoning in our town center, in how affordable housing units are assigned as part of a development project, and how they are managed over time. We have a really good relationship with ARCH staff and really value the feedback that they give us and the opportunity for us to give them a call whenever we have a problem, and they're always available, and they always pick up the phone. So just recapping on city of Samamish roles, the ARCH executive board is an administrative role that's currently staffed by the DCD Director. The ARCH Liaison Group is an administrative role that's currently staffed by the DCD Planning Manager, Miriam Leitner. This is a quarterly meeting that she attends. In the realm of policy support, ARCH staff serve as an extension of city staff as needed. This role is staffed by ARCH line staff. Then there's the Affordable Housing Unit Management, and this is a big one for ARCH. As ARCH starts to take on and add more and more affordable housing units that they then hold and manage, they have grown as an organization. They have needed additional staff to help support management of those units, to ensure that the covenants are being adequately enforced, to determine how to calculate rent adjustments, to provide support to landlords and tenants who are in those units, et cetera. So that's a pretty big body of work that ARCH takes on. So with tonight's agenda, there are three ARCH items. The first is the 2022 ARCH Budget and Work Plan. The second is amendments to the ARCH interlocal, and the third is authorization of ARCH Affordable Housing Trust Fund dispersion. First, before we switch gears to that, I wanted to give a brief overview of where the funds that support ARCH are located in the city's budget. So with regard to ARCH membership, which is the dues, the dues that the city pays to be an ARCH member, we have in our 21 and 22 budget, $275,600. You can see here on line 4908, ARCH membership in blue. This is billed quarterly. We receive invoices from the city of Bellevue, and we do pay these quarterly from that line, $275,600 over the 21 and 22 budget cycle, billed quarterly. This is the most recent invoice that was paid in March. With regard to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and other dollars that are sent to ARCH in support of building affordable housing units, we have $296,000 that was allocated across the 21 and 22 budget. The $296,000 comes from not only the $100,000 that comes out of the city's general fund, as you can see here on line 4100, that's $200,000, $100,000 annually for two years, but it also includes $96,000 that comes from Senate House Bill 1406 Affordable Housing Tax Revenue. That revenue was authorized for use for affordable housing under ordinance 2019-489, Resolution 2019-847, and finally, most recently, Resolution 2020-874. And you can see here on this invoice from last fall that the most recent payment was made in, it's under my box here, so give me just a second to move this. In 43, the, so $100,000 from the city's general fund, and then $43,186.41 from tax revenues collected under Senate House Bill 1406 and authorized finally by Resolution 2020-874. So those are where the funds come from to support ARCH. And with that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and unless, first, I'll ask if there's any questions before I hand it off to Lindsay, where she'll be able to do presentation on the three topics tonight. Seeing none, I will stop sharing my screen, and I believe Lindsay is with us. Thank you, Lindsay, for joining us. I appreciate you being here this evening, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, David. That was a great job. It was fun seeing someone else give that presentation, and you did a really awesome job. I wanted to make sure that Elsa Kings is also able to join us, because she will help me present some of the slides at the end of the presentation. I think she's in the waiting room. But while that happens, I'm going to pull up another PowerPoint. If you'd just give me a moment.
And it looks like she's able to join us, so she's just being promoted to panelist right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Great. So, well, David did a really great job kind of providing the background and framework for what we're here to talk to you about tonight. We do offer to come present every year, as requested by every council, to present on our budget, if you're interested in it. This year in particular, we had kind of a deeper evaluation process that went into forming the budget recommendation, so I'll be talking about that. And then I'll give you a very brief summary of the minor amendment to the ARCH interlocal agreement that's before you, and then I'll hand it over to Elsa to walk through the recommendations for the trust fund this year. So as I mentioned, we, the board in particular, has been doing some intentional thinking and evaluation about the moment that ARCH is in and kind of the changing nature of the housing landscape and the housing needs on the east side in the region. And for that reason, we wanted to take some time last year to look at what our staff capacity and organizational capacity has been and how the work has changed and grown over time. And in particular, we had an opportunity to join onto a grant that would allow us to hire a consultant to facilitate additional conversations with other communities outside of ARCH who may have some interest or opportunities in kind of partnering with us to expand our services. So I'll walk through the consultant findings. Cedar River Group was the consultant we worked with, and they performed a variety of interviews with stakeholders. They kind of did a landscape assessment. This slide, in short order, tries to capture the issue that we are facing, the incredible rapid loss of affordable units that we have seen in the last 10 years, the job growth that we have seen, and the population growth, and what's coming, the number of jobs and population that are likely to be seen by 2050. We also took some time to look at the past history of ARCH and kind of document the accomplishments of all the city's efforts that have occurred through ARCH, all the programs that have been established, in particular, the trust fund, which has been our largest production program, as well as all of those really important incentive and inclusionary zoning programs, and then kind of looking at our implementation and administration of those over time. We did get feedback from a variety of stakeholders. We got a lot of developers kind of weighing in about the value they see in having ARCH to go to, to help facilitate the process for them when they're looking to build affordable housing. We got kind of an assessment about how easy we are to work with relative to other funding partners and funding programs for affordable housing. ARCH has a really great reputation in that arena. that for affordable housing, Arch has a really great reputation in that arena. And then we did get some views from additional stakeholders who have felt like it's really time for Arch to step up and try be trying to do more and for Arch cities to be trying to do to do more than kind of the status quo. We went through a fairly detailed assessment, kind of quantitative and qualitative about what our staffing levels have been, what a program activity has been year by year since the early 1990s when Arch was formed. And no, no surprise, we knew this kind of a few years ago that we had not allowed the staff capacity to grow with the growth of all the programs. So we've been working on trying to rebalance that the last couple of years. This particular year, we were kind of focusing on a couple of key gaps. One is the growth in the number of incentive programs and the number of jurisdictions who have those on the books now and kind of the lack of a dedicated staff position to be administering all those. So that was one particular thing we wanted to focus on. And then the other really is kind of the the legacy of the trust fund, which is again, has been a really successful program, has created the largest portfolio of affordable housing on the east side, but has also created a lot of monitoring and oversight work that has not ever had a kind of dedicated staff position related to that. So in light of those issues, the board kind of developed a two-step plan to phase some of this growth. This year in 2022, we are adding two positions. One focused on the trust fund and really helping to kind of modernize some of our systems, particularly our loan servicing systems, as well as kind of keep up in the growth in the transactions, the complexity of the transactions, which continues to to grow as well. And then we have another position that was created that will be dedicated to all of those, administering all those land use and tax incentive programs, which which also could continue to grow at a fairly rapid pace. In 2023, there is kind of a preliminary plan to establish another position. The board will be continuing to work on what that looks like and discussing the parameters for that and how that gets funded in the next coming months. A key, a key piece of this and part of, you know, our evaluation about how we are moving forward into the future is what is our model for paying for the organizational costs? In the past, we have utilized a across-the-board per capita dues for all of the member cities. And this year, we had a discussion about the limitations of that model and and how we might kind of evolve in looking at a different model where cities that choose to choose to use the capacity and that need the capacity the most have a proportionate share of that cost. So for the position that's focused on incentive programs, we kind of created a a different tier of dues that is attempting to allocate those proportionately to the cities that will use that position the most. So we'll be looking at that year by year because things always change. Right now, Sammamish has a has some programs, but they are not as active as some of our, some of our other cities. And so there's kind of a more minimal contribution there. The work program remains kind of consistent with what you've seen in the past. The program areas are what you see here on this slide. But as you know, those programs have grown in size, which is a great, a great thing and a credit to all the cities that are working really hard to try and create more affordable housing. Out of this work program, every year we do ask the board to elevate certain priorities for us so that we can understand the board's prioritization of all this work that's out there. And so for 2022, we elevated what you see on the slide here. That includes some housing needs analysis that's going to be supporting all the cities starting to launch their comprehensive plan updates. We are going to be a part of the reporting, data collection and reporting around any goals for affordable housing production and preservation for individual cities and also for the subregion as a whole. We're going to continue to engage cities on how to create more sustainable revenue models and potentially dedicated revenue streams for affordable housing, similar to the sales tax credit that David mentioned. We are constantly looking at our capacity and trying to grow that so we can give you more support, do the work that that you want to do. We are focusing on the stewardship piece, of course. That has been a big focus for us the last two to three years and that's been the focus of most of our newer staff capacity in the last two years. And then finally, jumping down, we are going to start talking at the board level about a planning process, again, that kind of looks at the bigger picture, not just at kind of the staffing structure, but the larger structure of Arch and how to make that most effective so that we can stay strong as a coalition into the future. And that's a process that may may be outlined this year, but may not actually kind of complete and get underway till next year. A big part of that discussion is probably going to be this issue around how we set goals for what a local investment can be or should be. This has been an issue that Arch has engaged cities with on for for many years and developed a concept called parity to try and establish some measurable metrics around the around that topic. It has been a successful vehicle for having those conversations. We have invested over $80 million over the course of Arch's existence and leveraged that roughly 10 to 1, and we continue to kind of bring a lot of leverage for those local investments. But we do also know that, again, the need has changed to a level that just wasn't probably foreseeable when Arch was created. And the cost of development has also been accelerating at a pace that far exceeds how how fast our resources are growing. So we have some big issues to grapple with and the board had a discussion about this issue last year and kind of agreed to come back to it and potentially to try and engage some city council members or other stakeholders on the topic. This is just to give you some background about what the most recent set of goals was when the board did come down with a recommendation. That total goal of 1.8 million as a low end and 3.8 million is the high end is based on a number that was selected many years ago and a kind of an inflation factor applied to that. So that's, that's the most recent model we have and that's what we'll be looking at if that continues to make sense. So shifting gears, we do have a minor amendment that we are proposing to our interlocal agreement. And this was a recommendation that came from the executive board and a recent discussion that they had about a recruitment. So we do recruit to the advisory board every year, as David mentioned. These are volunteers largely living and working on the east side who have an interest in a particular knowledge area around affordable housing or real estate or architecture, et cetera. And it's been a board that we continually are trying to enhance the diversity and skills and experience of those members. One of the issues that a board, one of our board members flagged was the use of the term citizen and in a hope to create a more inclusive and welcoming name. We've recommended changing that to Community Advisory Board to make it clear that it's not restricted to citizens only. So it was recommended by the executive board. It's coming before all the councils now and I'm happy to answer questions on that. I can pause there before moving to the trust fund if there are any questions on those first two issues. Council, any questions? Lindsay, I'm not seeing any questions. Great. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Elsa Kings. She is the Housing Trust Fund Manager with Arch and she will walk you through the funding rounds this year. And Elsa, you just tell me when you want me to advance to the next slide.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for having me. I am very excited to be here. This is my first presentation to you as I am new to Arch as of last July. Very excited to be here. Tonight, I will give you a quick overview of our 2021 Housing Trust Fund, as well as go through some of the projects and recommendations that we have for you tonight and answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll go ahead and just start with the overview. In 2021, we received five applications that totaled just over $3.8 million in local funds to develop 344 units of affordable housing. We are recommending four of these projects for funding, just totaling just a just a little bit over 3.1 million. If that recommendation does include funding for a project that we previously funded to cover some cost increases due to a tough construction market. And I can go through a little bit of that when we talk about that project, that is the Totem Lake Project. And they were asking for 1.5 million to cover those additional costs and that is the recommendation here. I just want to point out that we did have one application that withdrew. They cited issues with feasibility. They just felt like they were not ready and could potentially come back in our during the 2022. Next slide, please. So as a, so it during the 2021 round, we had $6 million in available funding. Most of that funding came from general funds, the 50% of it. And as previously mentioned, we were not, we were under subscribe this year, so we did not deploy all of the available funds. However, our executive board is in conversations about potential uses for that funding. We want to make sure that we get it out the door and we utilize it for the urgent needs of affordable housing. And they're currently in conversations and we will be coming to you in sometime in the next few months with some possible ideas on the utilization of that undeployed funding. Next slide, please. One of the things that we pride ourselves with is the leveraging of funds. Arch leverages funds significantly for every dollar that we invest with our collective efforts in our member cities. We are able to leverage $14 in other public and private funding. Most of our leverage comes from tax credit equity and tax exempt funding. But there are other sources, for example, King County, the state of Washington. And this time around, we did have quite a bit of funding from the city of Bellevue through their 1590 program. Next slide, please. I am going to go ahead and move into the projects and talk a little bit about the projects and allow you to ask questions and our recommendations. These recommendations all advance projects that meet local, urgent local priorities and needs. The Totem Lake Project is a project that we previously saw last year. This is a project that we funded in in 2020. This project, due to cost increases, labor shortages, due to COVID and just an overall uncertain construction market, had significant increases. And there's applied to us for an additional 1.5 million in funding. We are recommending, our executive board is recommending that additional funding for this project. They also applied to King County for for funding and they were are recommending, are being recommended for that funding. The project includes 300 units of affordable housing. Thirty of thirty of those units are for homeless families, studio, one bedroom, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. Up to 60% AMI. The project is located in Kirkland and it will be under construction in the winter of 2024. Next slide, please. The next project that we are recommending for funding is the Friends of Youth New Ground Kirkland redevelopment. The project applied for 675,000 of additional funding. We previously invested 250,000 in 2005. And we are recommending this project for funding at this time. The Friends of Youth project proposes to redevelop a site currently in their portfolio in Kirkland into 14 bedrooms of affordable housing. The project will serve residents at 30% AMI and most those residents are ages 18 to 24. The existing building is to be extensively rehabbed and it will include alterations to add for additional bedrooms. As previously mentioned, the target population for these clients are ages or young adults ages 18 to 24 who are ready for independent living and are likely pursuing education in the nearby area as well as entry-level employment. Next slide, please. The next project that I want to, that I want to go over and our next recommendation is the Life Enrichment Options. We're calling the LEO Trailhead Project. This is a very exciting project. They applied for $250,000 and we are proposing that we fund the project at $250,000. The project is exciting as it is part of a larger transit-oriented oriented development. It will provide five units of affordable housing for individuals with developmental disabilities and an additional studio unit for a 24/7 live and care provider. The project will be fully integrated into a mixed income, mixed-use TOD transit-oriented development in Central Issaquah. It is very well located near trails and the future light rail. All of the DD units are SRO units, single-room occupancy units, and they will serve residents at 30% of area median income. This is quite a project as LEO is partnering with the King County Housing Authority and Spectrum Development Solutions, as well as the city of Issaquah to accomplish this project. So it's quite a large project. The LEO at Trailhead units will be located on the first residential floor of the Trailhead Building. It will be the Trailhead, the Trailhead Building itself will be developed and managed by KCHA and the LEO units will be within that building. The the project overall contains spaces for supportive services like a health center, a behavioral health clinic and an opportunity center, which will be owned and operated by the city. And a very interesting and very important aspect of this project is that the tenants will have access to all of these amenity spaces, the spaces in the Trailhead Building. Next slide, please. The next project is the Lifewar Hope Starts Here Project. This is a project to apply for $750,000 in funding. We are also recommending this project for funding in the amount that they have requested. The proposed project is the extensive rehabilitation of an existing three-bedroom, excuse me, three buildings in Bellevue. The site, the the buildings are currently owned by Lifewar. The project includes 25 one and two-bedroom units of affordable housing. In addition, Lifewar is proposing to construct a brand-new building for the for providing specifically services to their domestic violence survivors and to the residents. The residents at the Lifewar project will be a 0 to 50% AMI. One important and very interesting thing about this project is that this is a project that has been a culmination of several years of planning by Lifewar. They are able to, with this project, consolidate two existing programs. They are able to, with this project, consolidate two existing programs that were located in not the most of ideal situations for the residents. And they are able to, in addition to provide a better living space for the residents, they're able to add five additional units for their residents. The project will serve single women and children who have, are severely in need of housing and have been impacted by domestic violence. And they will provide services on site. 15 of those units will be emergency housing units and 10 will be transitional housing units. Next slide, please. The last project that applied to us is the Attain Sixplex, Totem Lake, Totem Sixplex, excuse me. The project applied for 650,000 secured grant. We are not recommending this project at the moment. The project is, is a new construction of a three story structure with six bedroom units of transitional housing for families earning 30% AMI. The project would contain, the project would be, would sit in the middle of a fourplex that is, of two fourplexes that are currently managed by Attain. This project, we felt is needed additional feasibility and we are working with Attain to work through the questions that we had for them and asking them to reapply in, in next round and continue to have conversations about the project and the questions that we had in their application. Next slide, please. So you see, so on this slide, you see all of the different funding sources. And as you can see, the city of Sammamish is contributing 121,000 to the projects that we are recommending for funding. And with that, I am happy to open it up for questions.
Councilmember Howe.
Thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful to understand what you guys are working on and some great projects. When I look at the work plan for 2022, my question is around some of the goals that you, that have been listed by Arch for Sammamish, which has to do with assist with data and scoping for housing needs, assist with development of incentives for phase three development, help explore development, and as opportunities arise. And what strikes me is these are very soft targets. These are soft goals. So it sounds like we are not, as Sammamish, very active in terms of creating opportunity for Arch to be involved. I think you will be involved when we get to the comprehensive plan. And I imagine that that's probably where you intersect with assisting us with understanding where, where Arch plays a role. But I would like some help in understanding how we could in some of these goals, if we could have some more firmness or metrics around those. Does that make sense?
Certainly, yes. And I think there's a lot of various options and, and different things city, cities have done to try to either kind of set their own targets or metrics that they kind of report on and measure year by year. Bellevue has done that. Kirkland recently set an affordable housing target for itself. Then there is kind of the broader planning framework that Sammamish already kind of works within and that David will be spending a lot of time working with, with his staff and with us on determining how the countywide planning policies establish their own sets of expectations and goals. Those are the kind of things I was alluding to. We're, we're certainly going to be doing all the data collection and reporting towards that effort. What those numbers look like and how they get expressed as goals or targets. We aren't entirely sure yet. That'll probably settle out this year, though. And then kind of there's other more qualitative ways a city can sort of direct its work around housing. You do have a housing strategy. Often what comes out of that is kind of a work plan for the city staff and to the extent Arch supports that, to say, these are the priorities that a council wants to establish and the work that they want to prioritize happening over maybe a two to five year time period or something like that. So there's different vehicles to try to provide that direction. And I'm sure David would be much more familiar with how the city may have done something like this in the past or maybe around other issues.
Yeah, if I could add on to that, thank you, Lindsay. I, I agree with everything Lindsay said. Our, our main opportunity that's right at our doorstep is our Housing Action Plan. And we, we are ramped up for that now. We're, we're initiating that. We, it's funded by Department of Commerce through a grant. We have a deadline we have to meet, so we have to stay on track with that. And then that work ultimately will roll right into our comprehensive plan, which, as you're aware, and as we, we briefed you on as part of our growth target discussion recently, there is quite a bit going on regionally regarding housing at all different income levels. House Bill 1220 is, is directing the city to do what, what you're asking us to do, Councilmember Howe, is to set some goals and to measure up our performance against those goals. What is not yet settled regionally is how the disaggregation of that need is going to occur. There's a regional conversation that is ongoing and we are watching and we are participating where, where we have opportunity. There, there are multitudine ways that the need, what, once the state assigns what the need is based on their studies and their information that they have, then the county is going to need to work out through the Growth Management Planning Council, Affordable Housing Committee, and via their staff, Michaela Daffern over at King County is leading this effort. They're going to be working out how that assigned need to the region, to the county, is then broken down and disaggregated across the cities in the county. At, at, on the one side, there is the, the proposal that is being considered to disaggregate that and to assign that based on the attribute of population. So that's one way that the county is looking at it. Another way that's being considered is with regard to how your growth targets stack up that relate to your buildable lands, your land capacity. On the one hand, with regard to, and I won't get, I'm trying not to get too deep into this because we're, we're definitely going to be having some very detailed conversations with council on this in the near future once the county finally issues the assignment of different ranges of affordable housing units by city. But the one thing that we keep raising is the concept of infrastructure concurrency and the adequacy and availability of infrastructure to support different levels of housing growth in the city. For us, we're wanting to make sure that we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves and taking on housing of different types. We want to also make sure that with that, we have a plan for how we're able to provide adequate infrastructure, smart growth, if you will. So I'll leave it at that. I, there's definitely a lot more coming on this. And we, we, as a result of some of the state, the state efforts, we will be having to have goals with, with numerical number, you know, with numerical objectives. And we, we will also have to be reporting out to the state on our success in meeting those, those, those numerical objectives, so.
Well, and, and thank you for that because without the number, without the hard target, you don't hit it. So, thank you for the answer. That's very helpful.
I don't see any more hands up at this moment. Karen, you're muted. Councilmember Howe.
Ask one more, are, one more question just around our, the, what we are providing in terms of funding to Arch. I'm pleased to see that we have increased our funds to, to Arch, so I think that's a, move in the right direction. Are we at an appropriate level given the size and scope of our city?
I can offer a little bit of background there because other cities have a very diverse revenue source that Sammamish does not have. So Redmond, Issaquah, Bellevue, Kirkland all have a sales tax revenue base that we do not. So if our contributions look skewed based on other jurisdictions and that's part of the rationale there.
I think that, that gets to the, the topic I mentioned earlier, how difficult it is to come up with a consistent way to establish those goals by city. And that was one of the first things I heard when I joined Arch and kind of met with each jurisdiction is we all have very different types of tax bases. That's, that's kind of why we, we have wanted cities to start looking at what are dedicated revenue sources that could be, that, that could be set aside, that don't necessarily compete with all the other really important and difficult things to fund already in your, in your city. So that's a hard question to answer. Obviously, we feel like there is so much unmet need out there and we are, we do, we are struggling to keep up our investments in projects that are getting more expensive. So we appreciate the interest in the topic certainly and hope we can keep talking about that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Liam.
My question is just for David Pyle. I see on the map that Sammamish has four Arch projects that they have built. When was the last one that was built?
Yeah, the last one that was built was the Habitat for Humanity project that is located down off 228th. And prior to that, I'm trying to recall, any prior to that were before my time at the city. So I apologize if I don't have intimate knowledge on those. I don't know if Lindsay can recall uphand. I think some of them we inherited through King County upon incorporation.
Okay, so, so the one for Habitat that was what completed in, I don't know, how many years ago was that?
2016, I believe.
I think we did the ribbon cutting in 2019, 18.
18, maybe?
It might have broken ground in 2016. I'm trying to remember.
We did the ribbon cutting. It was pretty recent.
Yeah.
So council, I don't see any more questions. There are three items here that require council action.
I don't know, Mayor, if it's easier to just, if, if to do one motion for all three or to do them individually. It just depends how the council wants to break it up.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly, it's if a council member wants to propose a motion to adopt all three of the resolutions relative to Arch, you could do that. Okay.
I could take a swing at it.
Thank you.
So I move that we resolve to approve the Arch 2022 Budget and Work Plan, the Arch 2022 Memo to councils. Oh wait, that's just the sheet.
So if you look at your agenda.
That's what I was going back to.
2022 Budget and Work Plan Program and then, and then at number one.
There we go. Okay. Okay, I move that we approve the 2022 Budget and Work Plan Program for Regional Coalition for Housing. That we also approve or authorize the amendment number one to the amended and restated interlocal agreement for Arch. And that we also authorize the duly appointed administering of agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter in agreements for the funding of affordable housing projects.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Howe, did you want to speak to your motion?
I feel that's unnecessary.
Wonderful. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Eight by a vote of six zero, the ayes have it. Well done, Councilmember Howe, on getting all three of those done at once.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to, to give a special thanks to Lindsay and Elsa for coming back tonight. Really appreciate their flexibility and willingness to join us and partnership with the city.
Indeed, thank you. Apologies that we made you hang on the line so late last time. Hopefully, we provided at least a little bit of entertainment, but very much appreciate you coming back again this evening. So thank you.
Thank you for, for adding the additional meeting. We really appreciate being able to come back so quickly.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, council. Next, we have another executive session. It's this to evaluate the qualification of an applicant for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1G. I imagine we should at least start off with 30 minutes. So let's see, it is almost eight o'clock. So let's say we're back here at 8:30. Last we need to extend, is that okay, council? Okay, I've had nods. We'll be back at 8:30 with potential action.
Good evening, everyone. Council will extend the executive session until 8, 8:40, another 10 minutes. Again, we'll extend the executive session until 8:40 PM. Thank you.
Oh, it's 8:41. Let's see who do we have? Oh, we've got Kaylee. We've got a quorum of councilmembers back here.
Oh, here I am.
Okay, well, let's get rolling. I'm sure he'll be on momentarily. So council, this is just simply a discussion of the city manager transition. And I will turn it over to council for discussions, thoughts?
No motions?
You have a motion too.
I'd like to make a motion. By my hand.
Want to make, wait, hold on your motion until we have Councilmember Trean. That's just a thought. Councilmember Ron.
Is Councilmember Trean on?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that we offer the position of interim city manager to Scott McCall.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think Scott has done a great job in working at the city during the last number of months. He's gotten to know the staff well and I think he would continue on and do a great job. I think work with Shoreline and the people he knows at the county and the state level and everything would be, that would help him a lot in this position. And I think that he's a good fit.
Further discussion? Councilmember Howe.
Can I ask a question around this in terms of the, the package or agreement that would be applied to that?
So it has to be specific to, our discussion is specific to the motion, so.
The motion.
Comments are relative to the motion on the floor.
I'm trying to understand if they're, if compensation is tied to the motion.
It, I, that would be my understanding because otherwise. It, I, that would be my understanding, because otherwise we haven't had a discussion of it, so.
Yes, they would be as per the proposed term sheet.
Well, okay, that's, that's where I would like to have the opportunity to um have that reviewed with. Potentially. Three other um, three council members to sit down and negotiate that part. I think it's not unwise to consider negotiation.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Okay, council, we can't, this, this is. Council member Howe has the floor, we can't have a dis- a discussion amongst council members, we can. Wait to be called on, so council member Howe, go ahead and finish.
I would like to do a, a, an, uh, an amendment to your motion, Karen, to have it be. That we absolutely consider having Scott come in as interim. And that we also form a small committee to discuss and negotiate the conversation going forward.
Hmm, okay, uh, well, I, I don't see why we can't do that now.
Pause, council member Moran, you do not have the floor, we have no second for that amendment, so.
Oh.
Council member Lam. You have your hand up.
I would second Karen, uh, council member House um. Motion, we need to discuss compensation in the entire package before we.
Okay. Okay, so I, I just want to be clear for council really quick. It, we are now discussing the amendment, we are no longer discussing the main motion, so the. Amendment is that we form a committee to discuss compensation. Council member Trin.
Yeah, I concur with uh council member Lam. Thank you.
Council member Moran.
I would agree, I think we need to discuss that, but I'm, I don't know why. We would form a committee to do it, I don't know why we would do it here, why do we need to not do it at the dais? The only thing I would say we, we wouldn't necessarily. Discuss at the dais. Um, actually, I don't see anything we wouldn't discuss at the dais, so. Wha- what would we not, I mean, I'm not understanding why we wouldn't do it here.
Council member Moran, it, it can be done here.
Then that's what I would suggest, because honestly, he needs, he, if he's going to take the job, he should know what he's going to be paid. And he should know what his terms are.
Okay, I think that was council member House's question, is she assumed, you said per the term sheet, so. Per the term sheet, if you want to read that into the record. Um, as part of your motion, you can do that, and then we can have that. Be part of the discussion on the main motion, but right now, um, this is on forming the committee, so. So um. I will just say that the one thing that's missing from both the amendment and the main motion is um. Having any discussion with our staff, um, and not that we normally have discussion with staff, but I do think it is important. That we engage the staff in this process, because based on the term sheet. Um, it is plausible that Scott could become our permanent city manager, and I. Take no issue with Scott, I think he has done a great job for Smamish, but I, I do think that second opinion from the people that he works with. Is important to inform us to our best ability in making um that decision and therefore. Putting Scott in as interim city manager would be one step ahead, I think of where we need to go. Um, so I, I, I want to be clear. I completely support Scott, I think he would do a great job. I just want to hit the pause button real quick. Because I want to be able to have an opportunity to engage staff and then circle back. Um, when we have checked that box and we say yes, staff is, is supportive as well, and then we move forward, so it will not be supporting the amendment. I will not be supporting the main motion. Council member Lam.
I would like to motion that we have.
So it would be an amendment, because we already have a main motion.
Can we amend that um the deputy city manager? Continue as acting manager for a period of two months, so that we can do those things that we just discussed?
My suggestion, and I think our city attorney is um about to unmute, or she did unmute. Is that we have a, we have a, a, a main motion and an amendment, we have to contend with those first. Um, so you could either, you know, another amendment is kind of awkward, because the amendment obviously then amends. The main motion, and it gets a little messy, or you have the opportunity to vote down the amendment. And or the main motion as amended.
Right, I was just gonna weigh in procedurally to say essentially what the mayor just said about the procedural complication of having. A second amendment that could negate either the first amendment or the main motion, and so. I think it's best to just deal with the amendment first. Finish discussion, call for a vote on that, and then deal with the main motion, and then to the extent needed, you know, you could. Have a new amendment to the main motion also if you wanted, but it's getting too many layers of amendments.
Council member Moran, your hand is still up, you didn't put it down, so I wasn't sure if you had another comment or not.
Um, this has been on the plate and known about for a long time. So the fact that this is coming up and we need to gather information and, and the poor guy would have to start on Friday and. Gee, we now are thinking about information is embarrassing. That is a thought that probably should have been had a couple of weeks ago. Um, so. I'm embarrassed for him, I'm embarrassed for us, I mean, I, that's terrible. If somebody needed that information, that should have been thought of a while back. Um, and I don't see a reason, I totally agree, we need to probably um have a discussion. I'll be vo- I'll be voting no on the committee, only because I don't see why we wouldn't do it at the dais, I think. I think the general public should be able to see what's going on. Um, but honestly, if we needed more information, we should have done it before.
So I'll just offer one additional thought, um, I am certainly not embarrassed by the fact that we're asking about this now, it would have been. Too premature, given um. What council has been contending with um, with the current city manager, it would have been inappropriate um to have. Step forward and made assumptions prematurely, so. I think our timing here is, is certainly appropriate, and I did engage the deputy city manager prior to this, which is why. You had information, so um. So if there are no more um discussion, then we are voting on the amendment. Which is that we form a committee to discuss the compensation tethered to appointing interim. City manager to Scott McCall, so all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Council member Howe and um, then city attorney, you may have to weigh in on this, I know if you make the motion, you cannot vote against it, does the same. Apply to an amendment, I don't know.
I, I'll vote for it, then it won't matter, fine.
Yay, yay, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of. Oh, I don't, I didn't hear deputy mayor, so I really don't know how she voted.
I'm a nay.
Nay, okay, so the nays have it, um, it was a two to four vote. Um, so now we're back to the main motion. Um, which is to appoint uh Scott McCall as our interim city manager. If there is no more discussion on the main motion.
Actually, to clarify for the record, because I understood that um. The maker of the motion clarified it was tied to the term sheet, I think that should be read into the record.
Agreed, council member Moran. Can you read that into the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, as per uh the proposed term sheet. It is um proposed a starting interim yearly base salary of uh two thousand fifteen. Contract length agreement is for six months with an auto renewal of every six months. Review upon completion of the initial six months. Uh, receive a three percent salary increase and twenty percent signing bonus based on. Uh, any new compensation package, the same automatic raise slash bonus continues for every six months. I continue as interim city manager. Severance, if council cancels my interim city manager contract for any reason and I am not named permanent city manager. I either, one, return to the deputy city manager position for a min- minimum of eleven months at the current interim city manager compensation package. Or I receive eleven months severance pay at any current interim city manager salary and benefits. Including retirement in the social security, vacation accrual and healthcare premiums. Should the city release me from employment without cause, at any point, I receive eleven months severance pay. At my current salary and benefits, including retirement in the social security, vacation accrual and healthcare premiums. Residency, uh, no residency is, is a requirement and a vehicle allowance of five hundred a month.
Thank you, and just for clarity, because you said two thousand fifteen, it's two hundred and fifteen thousand. Yeah, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, uh, the nays have it by a vote of two to four. So I will make another motion. Um, I move that we appoint uh Scott McCall as acting city manager. Until such time that council has an opportunity to potentially further discuss this with a subcommittee. With the um acting city manager.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, um, I'll speak briefly to my motion, which is um, I certainly want to engage. Um, our now acting city manager, Scott McCall, for services to become our interim city manager. Um, and I just think an easier way to do that, rather than sitting at the dais and hushing them out. Um, would be to have a subcommittee and have them then come back, if that's not council's flavor, then um. Council can boot that down, but. Is there any discussion, council member Howe?
The only point that I'll add is that any discussion that would be taking place with any committee would. We would, there would be a report to the public, so absolutely, it will be transparent, there will be nothing hidden. They, my. I can stop talking.
Council member Moran.
Um, there's no reason that it can't happen at the dais, and if there's not a cap. On um when this is done by, like, within two weeks. Um, this thing is just gonna go on and on and on, and I don't want to see him putting that back, because frankly, if I were him, I'd run. Um, so I'm gonna make a friendly amendment. That this is done within two weeks.
I'll second that. Okay, so we are now discussing um the amendment, which is that we complete this task within two weeks. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we will have it done in two weeks, uh, now this goes back to. The main motion um as amended, so now we will um. Appoint, um, or excuse me, we will. Uh, have our acting city manager, sorry. We all have our acting city manager um and have a discussion amongst a subcommittee of council members, that can be a separate motion. Um, engaged with our acting city manager relative to um becoming our interim city manager. Within two weeks. And report back to council. Any further discussion? Council member Trin.
Yeah, seems if you're gonna have a guy be running the city, you might want to compensate him accordingly. And give him the title, so I will not be supporting the main motion. Thank you.
Council member Moran, your hand is still up, I don't know if you had a comment or not.
I agree with council member Trin.
Okay, I don't see any more discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four two, the ayes have it. Um, so council, based on that motion, will need a subcommittee, so we'll need um up to three members of council. To serve on that. Council member Lam, uh, okay, I see hands, but I need a motion, folks. Council member Moran.
I make a motion uh for three council members, um. Pardon?
We need names, because we already have.
I, yeah, myself, mayor, and um council member Lam.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of um, sorry, uh, myself. Council member Moran and council member Lam serving on that subcommittee, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, we have set that subcommittee. Um. The council, one last thought before we um exit this discussion, which is. Um, whether or not we want to potentially um compensate. Our now acting city manager for the two weeks that, at the very least, at the two weeks that he'll be serving in that. In that role, which is um certainly an, an increase in his responsibilities. Um, I'll admit that I don't have all of the information at my fingertips as to um. What is appropriate, but I do think it is appropriate to compensate him for taking on additional responsibilities. Madam city attorney, do you, uh, Karen, I saw your hand, your hand, hang on just a second, do you have the information at your fingertips as to? Current salary, there's a percentage that we can.
I don't have the pay band for the city manager at my fingertips, but I think it would be a bump up and um, given he's not been. Um, previously serving as a city manager, it would be a bump up to put him at the low end of that pay scale, I just don't have that number to recite for the council, and I apologize. Um.
Okay.
I'm wondering if our city, current city manager, Dave Rudat, has that salary band, or if someone, perhaps the city clerk, someone has it available.
Um, one thing we can do, if no one has that readily um available to them, is that we can get that from finance. Potentially, and then we can do that retroactive to today. So we could take care of that at our next meeting and make it re- retroactive to the twenty ninth of March.
Actually, I think it would be appropriate to have it start April one.
April one, true, yes, thank you, sorry. So if, if council's amenable to that, um. We'll have them bring back the salary range, um, and then I would concur. Um, that the lower end of that would be appropriate, but I think we probably need to have that as a formal motion. Unless we want to wait until we actually have the number. But that's. Up to council. All right, I'm, I'll make a motion that we um. Grant our acting city manager effective April first, twenty twenty, to the lower end of the city manager pay scale. While he is serving as acting city manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, nay.
Okay, by a vote of five one, motion passes. So if I can, if somebody at City Hall is listening, if we can, if someone will just have that provided to council. What that salary range is, just so we have that, um, and then. That should do, okay, um, council, anything else on this topic before we move on?
Is there another motion related to the city manager transition? I believe one was provided, but by um. By outside council.
I don't know if I saw that. Council, did anyone else see it? Carrie, if you have something that you can forward to the top of everyone's inbox, I don't see anything. Thank you, I saw it just come in.
Hopefully it's in all of your inboxes.
Okay. Council, do you want me to just read the motion? Okay, I move to authorize the mayor to sign letter of acknowledgement recommended by council mutually agreed to by the city manager to satisfy the terms of settlement agreement between the city and the city manager.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I have no idea what that was. I heard Councilmember Trin say nay.
I was a nay.
Okay, thank you, all right, so by a vote of four to, ayes have it. Thank you for catching that, Madam City Attorney. Okay, council, the final item is our council reports, does anyone have a city council report? Okay, then I will draw your attention, if you did not read my council report to the highlighted section on the third page, and Mary Witter alluded to this in her public comment, which is the ILA group, or the Kokoni Work Group, is they were attempting to vote at our last meeting on an increase to the dues, because essentially King County wants to provide additional headcount, essentially, and that would cost the, those members in the ILA more money. I was able to convince the Kokoni Work Group, and I have to thank them to just pause, because they didn't send this over until Friday, and we did not have a council meeting that week, so I said, can you please just hold? So they are awaiting our answer via email before they go forward, so I am supportive of this, if you read the bullet point just underneath where the highlighted section is, says King County has provided a high level of service, the Kokoni inter-local agreement work program, and the broader Kokoni recovery efforts, county estimates it spends about $280,000 annually on regional Kokoni efforts outside of the ILA. The county's Kokoni Recovery Manager position is currently a special duty assignment, and the county's Water and Land Resources Division is proposing to make position at permanent FTE in the upcoming 2023, 2024 biennial budget process. So what you'll see below is the, the, the cost shares. I gave you several spreadsheets there, and what we would ultimately pay is $53,928, not the $41,286. So I move that we approve the, the increase in funding to support the FTE.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, motion carries, thank you, I will alert Kokoni Work Group that we will be supporting this. Okay, if there's nothing else, oh, yes, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Malchow, I just wanted to alert the council that there is no salary band for the city manager position, that it's all handled through negotiation, and I just wanted to give that new information to the council, in case the council wants to consider that and take more action about that tonight.
Okay, I do know that there is a ban for the deputy, do we have that?
Good question, hopefully that information is forthcoming. I did just get an email from the Assistant City Manager Finance Director, Aaron Anton, so just one second, I'm sorry, I think I have to go off screen to read it, one second.
No problem, it might also be helpful to know where our now acting city, or the acting city manager falls within that pay scale, because if he's already at the high end, and, you know, we don't know where he is, so we wouldn't know where to land, if that makes sense.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I did just forward the email from Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Aaron Anton, and it says that per city's employee handbook, for any employee promoted into a higher level position, a minimum of 5% increase above their current pay rate would apply, so that is what the handbook states. Of course, the council has discretion to consider that or something different.
Okay, very good, Councilmember Moran.
Well, I think that perhaps what we should do is we should wait, and then when we meet, we'll figure out what his salary is going to be, and we can pay him as per what that salary is going to be, and we can go back and figure it out per day for the two weeks. And just make it retroactive.
Well, I will state, and this is getting kind of technical, but there is a provision in the Washington State Constitution that prohibits retroactive pay for services already provided, there's an exception in the state law statute regarding an expired collective bargaining agreement, when you are negotiating, and then you can have that be retroactive, but typically, you cannot pay someone retro, retroactively for services they've already performed, so it would be a better practice to instead figure out if there's a percentage premium that you want to compensate him while he's in his acting city manager role.
Deputy Mayor Clerk.
Yeah, I move to give him an 8% on what he has right now from April 1st, for that two-week period.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Deputy Mayor Clerk, did you want to speak to your motion?
Uh, I think it's just a good midway point, it's above 5%, I don't know where we're going to land, kind of like Councilmember Moran just said, so I feel like this would be a good option forward.
I'll support the motion as well, I think it shows that we have interest and faith in our, in, in Scott to do the job, and hopefully that's amenable for that short-term period while we work out through some details. Councilmember Moran.
I just don't know what that number is, so I don't know if 8% is reasonable, or if it's way below, so I'm going to vote against this, because I think we should have some input perhaps from Scott.
Okay, seeing no more hands up, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Councilmember Moran, did you vote?
I did, I was a nay.
Okay, thank you, all right, by a vote of four to, the ayes have it, so we will pay him 8% for that two weeks while we hash things out. Okay, council, if there's nothing else for the go-to-the-order, certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, I assume there's no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of six zero, ayes have it, we are adjourned, thank you.